Welcome to City Council Meeting for May 25, 2021. This meeting was originally agendized when guidance was in effect for having limited in-person attendance. Since that time, the guidance has changed. You'll notice that we are not wearing masks. Those of us who have been vaccinated have that opportunity. Items list, well, in regard to that, though, we will still be taking public comment via call-in during the public comment period, as well as emails or voicemails provided prior to the meeting. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed, or related discussion may be delayed at any time. Prior to calling the meeting to order, Madam City Clerk, we have an announcement on the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to note, for the record, there was a software error and the segment header for public comment was omitted. However, the information about the public comment period was included on the agenda, and therefore, the second public comment period will be conducted. A revised agenda with the segment header has been made available and will be uploaded to the packet within 24 hours. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will call the meeting to order. We have an invocation this evening from Pastor Jason King with Calvary Chapel. Is Pastor King available? Please come forward. And please stand for the invocation.
It's good to be back in the building. Mr. Mayor, City Council, city officials, thank you for the invitation. It is a great privilege to be here and to do this. Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, whose name is above every name, Lord, we come before you tonight, God, and first, we give you thanks for who you are and what you have done for us, Lord, to demonstrate your goodness and your kindness to us. God, we give you thanks. Give you thanks, Lord, for these city leaders, for the citizens gathered here, for all those that'll participate, Lord, for the great concern that we have for the well-being of our city, Lord. We're glad for the involvement and the participation, and we thank you for this city, God. Lord, I do pray for these city leaders, that you would bless them and help them, God, that you would guide them and direct them, that you would help them, Lord, to be wise and humble. Father, that you would give them hearts of public servanthood, Lord, we thank you for that. God, we pray that you would bless them and those who work with them with a sense of stewardship, Lord, for the responsibility that you, God, have placed into their hands. So for them, we give you thanks. For this city, Lord, we give you thanks, and we pray, God, that you would bless and guide Boulder City Nevada. Father, we ask for all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor King. We will now do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, Pastor King, thank you for your words, and yes, we are indeed happy to be seeing things improve. All right. Madam City Clerk, do we have public announcements?
Yes, Mayor, there's one public announcement. Lynda Graham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Lynda Graham, and I'm chairman of the Historic Preservation Committee, and I'm here tonight to present the award for Historic Preservation, 2021. The Boulder City Historic Preservation Committee has determined the Boulder City Historic Preservation Award for 2021. It is hereby granted to the Williams Reclamation Employee House at 507 Utah Street, located within the Boulder City Historic District, as listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The 507 Utah Street residence was selected for this award because of the 26 single-family employee residences constructed by the Bureau of Reclamation in 1932. The property at 507 Utah retains the most of its original architectural design and materials and remains a contributing resource of the Boulder City Historic District. The homeowner has taken great care to retain and preserve important character-defining features, such as the windows, front entry, and the roof. Alterations to the home are minimal, which helps maintain the historic integrity and character of the property. The Utah Street neighborhood and the Historic District awarded this 25th day of May 2021 by the City of Boulder City, Nevada, the City Council of Boulder City, and the Boulder City Historic Preservation Committee, and we are proud of this property in Boulder City. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to the committee also for their consideration of that award each year. It's certainly a way to recognize the beginnings of Boulder City and the significance of these early buildings.
Definitely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll open our initial public comment period. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item, and as always, we ask that you be civil and concise in your comments. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to speak in public comment? All right, we will also take public comment via phone call. Anyone wishing to make public comment during the initial public comment period may call Anyone wishing to call, the number is 702-589-9629.
None for the first portion of the public comments.
Thank you. Again, this is our initial public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on items on the agenda, the phone number is 702-589-9629. Move to approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. Council members, any changes? Do we have a motion then for approval of the regular agenda?
Mayor, I move to approve the regular agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, approval of the consent agenda. Again, any changes, Madam City Clerk?
There's some minor edits to the minutes in there before you.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
I request removal of item two.
And Mr. City Manager?
No further changes.
All right, any changes or comments from council members? All right, I will move for approval of the consent agenda with item number two removed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that will bring us then to the regular agenda. Item number three for possible actions. Ms. Palatier, our Finance Director?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This almost looks normal, so I think we're making progress. There are three items before you tonight for consideration, three bills. These bills were introduced on May 11, and I will go through each one. So the first bill for consideration is Bill Number 1896, and Bill Number 1896 is brought before you at the direction of the council at the, I believe it was April 13 special meeting, or actually, it was the council meeting. We went over the budget, final changes, and the staff was directed to increase the percentage that we give to each of the special new funds that were created about a year ago, instead of 1%, 1.1% of solar leases. So this action will allow that to happen. And I don't know, do you want me to go through each one, or do you want to vote on each one separately?
I'd prefer we do each separately, please.
Okay, so that's pretty much the synopsis of this one. There's really nothing other than moving the percentage from 1% to 1.1%. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from council? All right, and this is Bill Number 1896. Anyone wishing to make a motion on Bill Number 1896? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you. I move to accept Bill Number 1896. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Bill Number 1897.
Bill 1897 is regarding to the financing plan for the pool, and we're bringing that before you tonight so that we can act on it when we do the augmentation in item number six. And I wanted to provide a visual so that you could see what this item will do, and it's the blue square almost to the last quarter, the last third of the thermometer. But about a year ago, Finance Department drafted a funding plan to finance the pool without using taxpayer funds and hopefully not even bond funding. But the pool includes five steps to achieve raising a significant amount of money over a five-year period, and several components of that are going to be on the ballot in June. And then there was the donation, which is the red bottom of the thermometer. But this item here is a five-year financing plan or funding plan, and it creates the ability for the city to set aside excess revenues after appropriately applying revenues to the five funds created last year. This is subordinate to the five funds that you just increased the allocation from 1% to 1.1%. At the end of the year, each year, if there are remaining funds over budgeted revenues from the prior year, we have the ability to use that funding mechanism to add further funding to the compensated absence, extraordinary maintenance, vehicle, the VERF fund, the revenue stabilization, and the risk management fund. And what this 1897 does is it allows us to take any other monies after we satisfy all those obligations and set it aside in a special project for the pool. So that's what this Bill 1897 will do. It'll be, and if this item is approved, when we get to item six, letter G, we will have that be part of the augmentation to allocate some of that money. So I'd rather answer questions on this. I could go deeper into it, but it's a little bit complicated, but it's part of the funding plan, and let me show you that. This funding plan was created about a year ago, and it is all in the plan, which is online. You can see it at the Boulder City website under the Finance Department, and you can see this particular plan and the various steps, and this is one of the steps. Oh, and the last part is, we hope to raise a little over $4 million under this process in the next five years, and this first allocation would be about $788,000, which is a little below, but still in the ballpark of what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
You know, I'll just comment that regardless of the direction that we go with the pool, you know, funding is needed to address the needs, you know, whether we end up going with preparing the facility and restoring it, or considering building a new facility. So I think this is an important step in just in collecting and getting those funds and making sure that we are setting aside money and that we are being prepared to address the many needs that are, that do exist at the pool.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will make one correction to what you said. It is taxpayer money, with the exception of the $1 million, $1.3 million donation that was made. The way you had stated it, it was...
Well, it's excess revenues over budget. So if there are no excess revenues over budget, and that could be in the form of a solar lease or a permit, or, you know, various numbers of things that could create that. So some years, it could be nothing, some years, it could be more, some years, it could be less.
Right, but it is taxpayer funds, so. And again, what this is, as you just said, it's a way to look at the budget each year. All the bills are paid, all the funds are funded according to the plan that has been set out, and if there is money left over, then we will put up to $1 million each year towards this. The pool, you know, again, we're at a point with it where it either needs significant repairs, replacement, or closure. So within this period of time, the zero to five years, something is going to need to be done that's going to be expensive, and this is one way to try and address that without detracting from the other goals that we have for the various funds that you mentioned before. So I think this is a wise way to go about a portion of this funding. You've also put together other sources of revenue. Ballot question will be asking approval from the voters of $7 million from the Capital Improvement Fund. That's approximately half of what's in that fund, so it will not drain that fund. And that fund, I believe, we spoke yesterday, gets a little over $3 million a year from land leases. So we're talking about a little over two years' worth of revenue from that capital improvement fund that would go towards this particular project.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion then on Bill Number 1897?
Yes, I would like to move to approve Bill 1897.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we will move then to Bill Number 1898.
Bill 1898 is a name change bill. It has, it's not creating a new fund, it's just changing the name of what we call, currently called, the Special Projects Fund. And in my opinion, and from what I've been able to get from other people, that when we say "Special Projects Fund," they've had a hard time comprehending what that's all about. So we've been wanting to change it for a while, so we thought this was a good opportunity to create a more appropriate name called Acquisitions and Improvements Fund. So this would be the new name, so from this time forward, you would no longer hear "Special Projects Fund." It would be called the Acquisitions and Improvements Fund, and that money would be the funding used to take care of general fund capital projects.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Again, I think this is just, you know, a clarification. When we hear "special projects," that's not necessarily very descriptive, but the acquisitions and improvements, I think that does define what this fund is about. I'll make the motion then for approval of Bill 1898.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palatier. Move to item number four. I thought he was going to say something. Anyone wishing to introduce Bill Number 1899? Councilmember Adams?
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Bill Number 1899 with title, waive the reading.
Introduction of Bill Number 1899, An Ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend Agreement Number 08-1217C between the City of Boulder City and Copper Mountain Solar One LLC to clarify the termination date and change the rent payment due date to a standard quarterly period. Bill Number 1899 will be considered at the June 8, 2021, regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. Introduction of Bill Number 1900.
I'd like to introduce Bill 1900, waive reading except for title.
Introduction of Bill Number 1900, An Ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend Agreement Number 09-1260E between the City of Boulder City and Copper Mountain Solar Two LLC to change the rent payment due date to a standard quarterly period. Bill Number 1900 will be considered at the June 8, 2021, regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. I will introduce Bill Number 1901, waive reading except for title, please.
Introduction of Bill Number 1901, An Ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend Agreement Number 10-13442C between the City of Boulder City and Copper Mountain Solar Three LLC to change the rent payment due date to a standard quarterly period. Bill Number 1901 will be considered at the June 8, 2021, regular City Council meeting.
Thank you, and since we're developing a pattern here?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll introduce, please, Bill Number 1902, waive reading, only title, thank you.
Introduction of Bill Number 1902, An Ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend Agreement Number 06-1104B between the City of Boulder City and Copper Mountain Solar Four LLC to adjust the lease boundary between this site and Copper Mountain Solar Five LLC and change the rent payment due date to a standard quarterly period. Bill Number 1902 will be considered at the June 8, 2021, regular City Council meeting.
Thank you, and just to finish things up?
Thank you. I would like to introduce Bill Number 1903, waive the reading except for title.
Introduction of Bill Number 1903, An Ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend Agreement Number 18-1769A between the City of Boulder City and Copper Mountain Solar Five LLC to adjust the lease boundary between this site and Copper Mountain Solar Four LLC and change the rent payment due date to a standard quarterly period. Bill Number 1903 will be considered at the June 8, 2021, regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. That brings us to item number five then, for possible action, Resolution Number 7276 regarding a contract between the city and Turf Tech for golf course maintenance. Mr. Hall?
Good evening. Wow, this looks good. We're back to normal, I think. Mr. Mayor and City Council, for the record, my name is Roger Hall, your Parks and Recreation Director. Item number five on the agenda is Resolution Number 7276, a resolution of the City Council of Boulder City, Nevada, approving Agreement Number 211932 between the City of Boulder City and Turf Tech, Inc., for golf course maintenance services. At this time, I'd like to bring up Paul Sikora, Purchasing Manager for the City of Boulder City, and Paul will explain the process the city went through in order to make this recommendation to City Council. After Paul is finished, we would be happy to answer any questions. Also, Bill Atkins, President of Turf Tech, is also here in the audience if you have any questions of him, and so now I'll bring up Paul. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sikora?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me get this up here where I am. All right, so we established RFP 2021-02 Golf Course Maintenance and published it in the Nevada Government eMarketplace on February 4. When we put it in the system, it was farmed out to 1,677 invitees who do lawn maintenance that were in the system. We also published it in the Review Journal per the NRS. The first event that we did was on February 17, where we did a site visit for any interested companies. It was optional, and we went out to the golf courses and toured all of the golf courses. We had eight companies show up for that optional site visit. The next event after that was us establishing a deadline for questions, which we received 38. I typed an addendum and published that addendum on March 8 in the Nevada Government eMarketplace and emailed that addendum out to all of the parties who had showed up at the site visit as well. The closing for the RFP was March 18 in the Nevada Government eMarketplace. We received seven proposals from seven companies. The next step that the city does after that is we conduct a series of evaluations. So you have to remember, an RFP is different from a bid. A bid is price-based, and then an RFP, price is just one consideration out of the whole package. We look at things like management qualifications, certifications, history, and things like that to make a determination and rank order from one through seven, who the evaluation committee thought was best. We had six people on the evaluation committee. I managed the evaluation committee function. I did not vote, I just administered it, and we sat down and conducted our Phase One Evaluation Committee, which was a review of all of the packages and proposals on March 25. At the end of that evaluation, we had a rank order structure, and I believe in your agenda packet, you've seen the Phase One and Phase Two sanitized score sheets that were with my recap memo. But in a nutshell, out of 600 possible points, we had a tie at number one with International Golf and Turf Tech, and then the third best was Elite Golf, then OB Sports, PTI Golf, Bright View Golf, and Landscapes Golf, working the way down. The evaluation committee at that point decided that we wanted to conduct a Phase Two Evaluation because we had three scores that were very high at the top and close, and we invited all three of those companies to come in and talk to us about their proposals, so we could ask questions and they could ask questions. That was conducted on March 31, where we had the top three come in. At the end of that discussion, we had the evaluation committee, the same six members, score the Phase Two evaluations, and then we added it up two ways. One, which is raw score, the total amongst all the evaluators, which Turf Tech came out on top. Then we added it up a second way, which was the overall standing amongst all of the companies. So for instance, Turf Tech came in first on five scorecards and second on another. So if you add up 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, and 2, you know, they had a total of six points, seven points, and the other companies would have had 10 or 12. So Turf Tech came out both ways, number one, on the majority of all the scorecards. So Turf Tech came out both ways, number one, on the majority of all the scorecards. And we decided to make a recommendation of award for them. We published a recommendation of award on April 6 in the Nevada Government eMarketplace. By NRS, we have to wait five duty days to see if there was a protest. That closed on April 13 with no protests whatsoever. So that concluded the entire process. And what I'd like to do now is to open it up for questions for myself or Mr. Hall or Mr. Atkins over here. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? How was the bid amounts or the proposed amounts in comparison of these three that were further evaluated?
I just want to remind everybody that we only gave 10 points towards the finances of this because, again, it's not financial based. But the prices were varied. Turf Tech initially came in at 1.99 million. The other two came in at the 1.77 and 1.75. But that was for the gold standard, which is what we published in our RFP. All of those companies also gave us, as we were talking to them in the Phase Two Evaluations, various other options that would have reduced monies, changed some processes. So we had to consider all of that. When it was all said and done, Turf Tech came during that meeting and said that they would be very happy to continue to offer us the same services at the same price that we had been paying them for the past few years, which is 1.62 million dollars, which is the price you see in this contract right here. So we had to spend the next couple of weeks going back, taking those gold standard, maintenance standards that we had published in the RFP, and just making the contract match what Turf Tech was actually doing out there. Because there were some things in that gold standard that Turf Tech hadn't been doing over the last few years because years ago, we had told them they didn't need to do it anymore because we were trying to save money. So the prices varied. To answer your question in a very short way, the prices varied in the end from 1.62 to 1.74, kind of in that ballpark.
All right. Thank you. What services, well, of the services that have been agreed to, or at least tentatively agreed to, to not be performed by Turf Tech, can we, can you give us some idea of what those services are and who will perform them?
Sure. In the gold standard, we had put the same standards we published 20 years ago when it was a new golf course. It was a gold standard. Some of the things that Turf Tech had not been doing over the years at the city's concurrence were things like not continually mitigating the cattails out there. So we removed the language in this proposed contract to show that they did not have to remove cattails. Another one was maintaining the water coolers out there. We removed that language as well because we decided that we weren't going to do that anymore. The maintenance of trees was identified in the gold standard, but we hadn't been doing that out on the golf course for years. There were several other things. The gold standard said that we would have a step cut, which is like a three-tier cut to the golf course and the fairways, which is more expensive because you're running more lawnmowers. So what we'd been doing for the last few years was doing a two-tier cut out there, which saves a lot of money. So what we did was we right-sized this agreement to what Turf Tech had actually been doing over the last few years out there. So I wouldn't say we made any concessions. We were just right-sizing the agreement. As far as how those other things will happen, there has been discussion that we may try to get those things done with capital improvement projects down the road. The tree trimming out there, maybe a project for cattails. But as it stands now, those won't be done in this contract.
All right. Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, you talked about the gold standard. So this is different than the gold standard. Does this have another name like silver standard or?
It's no formal standard. If I were to just use, the Olympics are coming up. The gold standard is A+. It's what every top 10 golf course in the world wants. Then there's a silver and a bronze. This is the silver standard.
Okay. And so you offered a reduction to change it from the gold standard to Turf Tech. Did you also offer that to the other?
Yes, ma'am.
Agencies? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I was very, I'm glad to see that they were awarded the contract. I got a wonderful tour of the golf course. I'm not being a golf cor, golf golfer. I don't think I've ever had a tour of a golf course before. So it was very impressive, and I was very clear about their commitment to the, to the level of quality and the job that they did. So I'm glad to see that. And I was going to ask the same thing about, is there, is there a standard gold, silver, bronze? And does that affect the desirability of people to come play golf in Boulder City?
Frankly, yes. If we still had a top, this course was once in the top 40 in the United States 15 years ago when we had the gold standard, we could afford it. It was about $2 million a year to do that. If this course was in the top 50, you know, in the United States, it would be more, more desirable. We would get more people out, a lot of buddies trips, and you'd see a lot more play. The standard it's at right now, it's still a gem in the valley. I'm a golfer, and I can tell you, this is in the top, top 10. The creek anyways is in the top 10 courses out of the entire Clark County. So it's a good standard they're maintaining it at. And in the future, we can get it to a gold standard. If we can ever find a few hundred thousand dollars a year to throw it at a contract to get it back up to the gold standard, that would be great. But right now, we, we're not there.
Thank you.
And I think it's important to keep in mind that the course operates at a deficit. I think right now, in our current report, we're showing an $800,000 deficit for the course.
I don't believe it's that. I don't believe it's that. The budget, my.
Yeah, I'll defer that to you, Dan.
The budget shows that if they, if we were in line with the budget and the revenues didn't come in as they have been coming in, it would have cost the city 800,000 to maintain both courses. But as you know, with COVID, there's been a lot more activity at the golf courses. So the revenues have been much higher than what was budgeted. So we're not going to have to use as much money as what we had budgeted to maintain those courses this year.
Due to the increased play, and I believe there's also been a fee increase?
Yes, a slight fee increase.
Okay. So again, I think that's important to keep in mind. You know, it's certainly very welcome to have the course noted for the condition it's in. You know, I know that Andy Shaper does a great job for his end of it, but I think Turf Tech often gets overlooked that they're the ones out there actually making the course look the way it looks. But that costs us money when we do that.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, at some point, it would be nice to have some indication of exactly what it is that the golf courses do for our businesses here in town. I know that's something that's always brought up, that, oh, look what it's doing for our businesses. And that's great, but it's taxpayer dollars that go to pay for it, not, the businesses, in other words, are not paying to have the golf courses maintained. The taxpayers are doing that. So I think there's always that evaluation that needs to be done. I think the way you laid this process out, that was finally done. I think this contract just kept rolling over for 20 years.
20 years.
Without ever being evaluated. That's not a good way of doing business either. I think that whenever we have sizable contracts, we need to go through that process, you know, with the work that Turf Tech has done in the past. They certainly have made the reputation of that course what it is with the work that they do in maintaining it. But we have an obligation on the other side of that to the taxpayers to say, we're going to look at these contracts. We're going to go out for these requests for proposals. We're going to look at the amount that the taxpayers are being asked to spend on this. And again, I appreciate the way that was done in this case.
Thank you, sir.
We should not be doing the 20-year, not really knowing what we're doing kind of thing. So thank you for that.
We, this served a lot of purposes. The main one is we have a legal solicitation that we can fall back on and say this is valid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam City Attorney, there was some change or some modification that you had provided to us prior to the meeting?
Sure, I can briefly. Just in reviewing the contract and the designated representatives, you know, we felt that the designated representative should be a position rather than a named person here at the city with regard to the contract. So we have amended it to change it to it would be the, the Director of Parks and Recreation is the position that would be the designated representative to assist the contractor in carrying out the maintenance obligations. Throughout the agreement as well, for other things, it says "or designate" so that, you know, there can be discretion given to certain individuals for certain items as well in the maintenance standards as well as the, the contract.
Any questions or comments from council? All right, we have Resolution 7276 for consideration.
I'd like to move.
Thank you. I'll move to approve Resolution 7276.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yeah, Mr. Sikora and Mr. Hall, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number six. Again, we have multiple items here, including a public hearing on the tentative budget. Ms. Pelletier?
To lower this to my height. Good evening again, Ms. Pelletier, Boulder City Finance Director. Before we have the public hearing, I'd like to just go briefly over how we got to tonight. And one of the things over the last few months when we've had our meetings, we've always, always ended with going over the calendar. Well, tonight, I'd like to start by going over the calendar. So I guess I have to put it on. Is it not working? Do I need to shut it off and turn it back on?
Is it on?
Yeah.
It's frozen.
Frozen.
It's not you, it's frozen.
Okay. Well, I'll start talking because you probably already know the calendar. But back in December, before Christmas, our budget manager prepared information to send out to all the directors. And so by Christmas, they were all given their budget workbooks to work on over the holidays, which I'm sure they all did over the Christmas holiday. So what our schedule was, was on January 5, 2021 to January 15, the department directors met with myself and the budget manager to go over their, their recommended, not recommended, but their requests for the upcoming year. And on January 19 to January 21, we again met with the directors and included the city manager and actually the personnel director was involved in those meetings. On February 10, we had the first City Council Budget Special Meeting to review the operations and maintenance budget. On, on February 24, we had a staff-led citizen workshop to solicit information from the citizens and comments about the budget. On March 10, we also had another budget review meeting where we had changes from the first two meetings and incorporated those and presented the budget, the revised budget. And on April 13, during the City Council Meeting, we reviewed the operation maintenance budget and the capital budgets. On April 15, the tentative, we filed a tentative budget with the city clerk of Clark County, the clerk and controller, and Nevada Department of Taxation. And then we also filed notice of a time and place for the budget hearing. So on May 14, we published notice of the budget, budget hearing, which is going to be tonight. And tonight, we are hoping for the adoption of the final budget and the adoption of capital improvement program and the adoption of pay and classification FTEs and COLAs. So if all that happens, then we will mail the final budget and affidavit of publication to Nevada Department of Taxation. And on June 21, we'll publish notice that summary of final budget is available for inspection. I do want to also thank the City Council, the citizens of Boulder City, and the city staff for all their help and guidance in creating the 2122 budget. And I think now we're going to have the public hearing, but after the public hearing, I want to also give a special thanks to the Boulder City Budget Manager, Angela Mannenin. After we have the public hearing, she will get up and go through all of the items that you have before you tonight. She, and actually, A through F is, is related to the budget, and G and H are related to the augmentation. And in G, we will be augmenting money for the pool as approved in item three. So with that, I think we can go ahead and have the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the budget prior to the public hearing? Again, there will be opportunity for council to ask questions or make comments following the public hearing. Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to make a comment that I'm very, very happy with Finance Department for all the work, hard work that they've done. I'd like to also thank some of the citizens who gave some input, and I'm very happy that they, you've incorporated some of the council's requirements. Thank you.
All right, I will open the public hearing then. Anyone wishing to comment on the tentative budget? The phone number to call is 702-589-9629. Is there anyone in council chambers that wanted to make comment on the budget? All right. Again, the public comment period for comments on the budget is open. The phone number to call is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any comments provided for this public hearing?
None.
Thank you. Again, this is the comment period for public hearing on the tentative budget. Anyone wishing to comment? All right, hearing no one for comment on the budget. We will close the public hearing. Ms. Mannenin, I guess.
part-time classification compensation increases and approving the full-time equivalent positions. So, next fiscal year 22, full-time employee count will be 207.8 employees. The .8 is because any employee that works 32 hours is counted as .8 of an employee. And this only includes employees that work 32 hours or more a week. It includes three new positions, including the building official, which was actually approved last year but was postponed due to COVID, the personnel assistant, and the city clerk assistant. And we removed this special project manager, so the headcount actually only increased by two. So, I'd like to answer any questions you guys have on 7280, or I can bring up Mr. Bolt.
Any questions regarding the classifications or approval of employee position changes? All right, anyone wishing to make a motion then on Resolution 7280?
I'm.
Counsel member Bridges?
Yes, thank you. I move to accept Resolution Number 7280.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Resolution 7281.
Okay. So, this is for the new EMT schedule fees. So, the Boulder City Fire Department provides fire, rescue, and emergency medical services and is responsible for providing emergency medical transport services within the department's jurisdictional boundaries. Resolution Number 6366 was adopted on August 11th, 2015, and established the emergency medical transport fees for Boulder City Fire Department. The cost of providing this emergency medical care and transport services for advanced life has dramatically increased since it was adopted in 2015. Resolution 7281 will repeal Resolution 6366 and adopt a new schedule of fees for the Boulder City Fire Department. And I'd be happy to bring up the fire chief to discuss any questions you might have.
Thank you. I know this has been discussed at a previous council meeting. The, since 2015, obviously, costs have increased. We are no longer in line with the fees that are being charged by our adjacent cities. Any questions or comments from council members? Again, Chief, if there's something you would like to add, please feel free.
I'll do that.
Okay. All right. Again, this has been discussed previously, so anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7281?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 1781, or 7281, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Resolution 7282.
Okay. So, this is for the new EMT schedule fees. So, the Boulder City Fire Department provides fire, rescue, and emergency medical services and is responsible for providing emergency medical transport services within the department's jurisdictional boundaries. Resolution Number 6366 was adopted on August 11th, 2015, and established the emergency medical transport fees for Boulder City Fire Department. The cost of providing this emergency medical care and transport services for advanced life has dramatically increased since it was adopted in 2015. Resolution 7281 will repeal Resolution 6366 and adopt a new schedule of fees for the Boulder City Fire Department. And I'd be happy to bring up the fire chief to discuss any questions you might have.
Thank you. I know this has been discussed at a previous council meeting. The, since 2015, obviously, costs have increased. We are no longer in line with the fees that are being charged by our adjacent cities. Any questions or comments from council members? Again, Chief, if there's something you would like to add, please feel free.
I'll do that.
Okay. All right. Again, this has been discussed previously, so anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7281?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 1781, or 7281, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we'll move then to Resolution 7282.
Okay. So, 7282 goes with the energy usage rates. So, recently, Boulder City had a rate study with Raftellus. The Utility Advisory Committee reviewed this study and recommends a 3% electric rate reduction for all customers. And Resolution 7282 would replace 7030 and put in place this decrease.
Thank you. And, you know, in specific regard to this, two fiscal years ago, we also had a resolution to repeal the annual automatic 2.5% increase in electric rates. With this reduction, that will be 5% or 8%, depending on how that might be calculated, if we're looking at potential rate increases without the actions that the city council has been contemplating. And again, I do appreciate the work that the Utility Advisory Committee has done reviewing that Raftellus report. There's a lot of factors involved there. It appears that we will be able to continue at a significant pace with our capital improvement projects even with this rate reduction. Any questions or comments from council members? Counsel member Folda?
I just wanted to comment that I appreciate the Utility Advisory Committee and for digesting all this. It's, it's a, it's a lot of work. They've done a lot of work to, to get to this point, and I'm just, I'm really thrilled for the residents to be able to, to have a 3% reduction in their electric rate. We have a lot of seniors and things that are on fixed income, and this will, will help them a lot. So, thank you for everyone who's worked to get to this point.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, did we have Mr. Porter on the lines or anything he wanted to add?
Mr. Porter, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Go ahead.
Just real quick, I want to thank the Utility Advisory Committee and support of city council as well, and both Finance and Public Works Department, because there was a lot of behind-the-scenes effort that had to be done, not just the rate study, but we had to complete a raw water hydraulic model for our raw water system. We had to complete a sewer model for our sewer system. We had to complete a water and sewer condition assessment for our distribution water system as well as our lift stations, then our waste control plant. We had to complete an electrical assessment. All that led to developing the five-year CIP, which, you know, the operation and maintenance budget impacts the rates, but the CIP really can determine what happens. So, that work and the effort that was put in by the UAC and the Department of Finance have both worked together. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Perhaps the lunar eclipse is starting early where Mr. Porter is. Again, I do appreciate that, that is Utilities Director Dennis Porter. Certainly, this has been an all-staff-wide effort on getting a handle on what the funding is within the utility department. And again, as Councilmember Folda said, we need to look for ways to provide the best value to our ratepayers that we possibly can. The rate increases that have been approved prior to any of these members being on council in 2016 was very aggressive in the rate increases. So, to be able to roll that back in terms of the automatic increases that would have continued on, as well as this 3% reduction, we'll be looking at the next resolution that is going to further reduce the service fees for water connections. You know, we, we need to be conscious of people who are on fixed incomes, and I think that this contributes to that. With that, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 7282.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that brings us then to 7283, which is that adjustment to the water service fees.
Yes. So, using the same study and the recommendation with the Utility Advisory Committee, it's recommended to decrease the water service fee by $10. And so, Resolution 7283 would replace Resolution 7031 and put in place this decrease.
Thank you. Questions or comments? You know, I think an important factor out of this, I mean, one, the, the debt that the city has is all within our utility fund. And all of that debt involves what's known as the raw water line, which was a project done a number of years ago. We've done some work, the Finance Department has done some work, on getting that debt refinanced so that it can be paid down more quickly and less expensively. But all of it is within the water portion of our utility fund. And I'm always careful about defining separate funds within the utility fund, because the enterprise fund is the utility fund. But in order to look at it in a more exact way, we have developed these, the four funds within the utility fund. This particular type of fee, I believe it had increased from, I think it was $5 a month to $25 a month. It's being rolled back by $10 a month, is that correct? So, we're going from 25 to 15. You know, yes, that's only saving people $120 a year, but when we raise a fee like that, it's, it is impossible for someone to conserve water and reduce this fee. It's a fixed fee. It gets charged to every single ratepayer in the city. So, the ability to roll this back and maintain the lessening of the debt load that we have from this raw water project that was built years ago, you know, once again, this is something that benefits the ratepayers and still allows us to pursue the goals that we want within the utility fund, which is to provide dependable service to our ratepayers. Again, with that, any other questions then on Resolution 7283? All right, I'll move then for approval of Resolution 7283.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That then brings us to the biggie.
Yep. Oh, we are on the right one. Okay. So, sorry about that. Discussion and approval of the fiscal year 22 final operating capital budgets. So, we have met many times on this topic already. The budget you have before you today, we have implemented the changes that were made with, by council on April 13th, so that increased the general fund expenses by $112,000. That includes the $100,000 for the historical home grant and about $11,000 for labor related to the, the community garden. The acquisitions and improvement fund, formerly known as the special projects fund, expenses increased $125,000, which is five, sorry, $50,000 for the pet mausoleum and also $75,000 for a community garden. The RDA fund expense increased $125,000 with the water filtration historic structure report. And then also, since we last met, the three special revenue funds, budgets were increased to represent their fund balance for maximum availability for unforeseen circumstances in the upcoming year. So, the risk management fund moved to $2 million and 388, plus 388 for insurance, insurance purposes. Extraordinary maintenance budget is now 2.2 million for next year, and compensated absences fund is 2.5 million. So, it doesn't necessarily mean we will spend that money, but in case of any situation where those funds can be applicable, that money is available for, in next year's budget. Also, the utility billing expense increased $90,000 for utility billing merchant service fees. This fee always existed, it just was missed in the shuffle and it was in the wrong admin account, and so just now it's actually in the budget. And to summarize, the fiscal year 22 budget has 16 governmental funds with expenditures about $46.8 million. This includes the general fund of $41 million, which has 5.6 million that's being transferred out to the special revenue funds. So, the general fund is only 35.4 million in operations. The general fund ending fund balance is 7.3 million, which is 20.6% of expenses. This includes the augmentation we'll discuss here shortly. And that's more than the one-to-two-month operating reserve required of it. The three proprietary funds have, we have estimated operating expenses of 28.5 million, capital improvements of 7.9, and a debt principal of 7.1. So, a total for proprietary budgets is 40.6 million for next year, with 36.8 million being the utilities, 3.6 being the airport, and $150,000 for the cemetery. And if you, I'm here to answer any questions you have on the fiscal year 22 budgets, or I also request you consider approving the fiscal year 22 budgets.
Thank you. And again, I know we get down to this point, the budget's due to the state, it's a balanced budget. We started talking about this with the capital improvement fund last November, so we'll get a few months off and then we'll start talking about the next year. Any questions? Counsel member Bridges?
I, I just want to make a comment. I was trying to figure out the right word for this entire process, and I came up with it, painstaking.
Oh, true.
Yeah, so, this has been a painstaking process, and it's really amazing to go through it. And, you know, there are disagreements, you know, philosophical disagreements and project disagreements, but to watch the whole thing come out on the other end and to get a compliment from the state and say, you know, this is, and it is a balanced budget. And everybody didn't get everything they want or got something they didn't want, but again, it's a fascinating process to go through, and I'm, I, I think you deserve a tremendous amount of credit, you and Diane, both.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone else? Counsel member Adams?
Yeah, you know, it, it will be redundant, but, but kudos to, to the Finance Department and everything that, that, that you guys did. You know, I know this council can be a bit demanding sometimes, you know, in the way that we like to see things and how we want to see things presented. But in the end, you guys brought a, a really great final product that is, that is easy to read. It's, it does a great service to the, to the community so that they can understand better where our, where our monies are going, how their, how their money is being spent and the services that it's providing. And so, I just, I just want to thank you guys again just for how, how much you guys have done to, to get us here tonight. I know it may not seem like we've had a lot of discussion here tonight at this big meeting, but as has been pointed out, we have been talking about this for some time, and, you know, I'm very, very confident in what we have, what we have accomplished in moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Couple of questions. What was last year's final budget?
It depends. So, it was 35.1 million if you're looking at just the operating. So, but if you include the transfers out, it was about 44 million.
Okay. And this year, we're at 46?
We're at 40, well, 46 for all the governmental, the general fund is just 41. So, it's misleading. The budget is less this year, but we also, we created all those new funds last year for large transfers out.
Okay. So, if we look down at, at total revenue this year versus last year?
Oh, the revenue off the top of my head.
I believe, I believe we're ahead of the game.
Oh, we're definitely, we only, we were only expecting about $26 million last year, and this year, it's about 35. So, we're way better shape than we were going into fiscal year 21.
Right. And again, I, I want to point that out to our residents here. You know, this, this has been a terrible year, you know, a year that I would gladly have lived without in my life. But we've seen many other cities around the state and around the country sustain considerable losses. You know, we were fortunate that there was a one-time payment from one of the solar companies who broke ground this year, and that brought in, I believe it was over 3 million.
Like 3.6, yes.
So, that is an offset to revenue that we otherwise would have lost. I mean, we did lose revenue in the form of sales tax and consolidated tax. So, you know, coincidentally, we happen to have had that payment made this year. The other thing that I would like to point out to our residents is that sustainability. Other communities, other municipalities around the state depend on gaming revenue, sales tax revenue, to a much larger extent than we do here in Boulder City. We have no gaming revenue here in Boulder City. compliment from the state on your efforts. I, I've said it many times, we're approaching a really good place. And, you know, I, I may someday say we've gotten there, but we're certainly much closer. I know there were times this year that the staff in the finance department was reduced. You had some employee changes there. So it's been a difficult year and difficult circumstances. I want to say thank you as well. I do not see a resolution for this particular item. Do we need a motion to accept the budget?
I, you do need to approve it and the city clerk has the tentative letter that with your signatures I will submit to the state, but there is no actual resolution.
Madam City Clerk, do we still need a motion to accept? All right, I will make a motion to accept the budget.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we're moving through these. Resolution 7284.
And 7284 is the augmentation for the general fund budget for fiscal year 21, so this current year. As Diane mentioned earlier, when we adopted the five funds, the five, special revenue funds about a year ago, we gave them the opportunity for a funding source of 10% of greater than expected revenues this year's, or not this year, fiscal year 20 audited greater than anticipated revenues was 1.1 million, 314,945. So 10% going to the special revenue funds such as BRF is 131,494.50. And then the same for extraordinary maintenance, compensating absences, and risk management. Revenue stabilization, our fifth fund is nearly to its cap, so we're not recommending moving any money to that fund this year. The remainder of this, which was approved in item number three, will go to extraordinary maintenance, the pool recreation project. It'll, it'll remain there either to be used for the pool or the, either repair, either replace or repair the pool or stay there as needed. So that's how that will be allocated. If anyone has any questions before the next one.
Any questions on Resolution 7284?
I have one more item, part of it though. So that's the big chunks of the augmentation. There is also greater than expected fire permits that came in this year. So our fire permit revenue directly offsets the expense and it came over about $76,000 more than expected. So it's also going to augment that new revenue with the, directly with that expense.
Thank you. Again, any questions then on 7284? Anyone wishing to make a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Resolution 7284.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then our last item, Resolution 7285.
Okay. And this is another augmentation for the current fiscal year. It's just not for the general fund. Coming into fiscal year 21, we projected our revenues very low because we did not know what the COVID implications were going to be. More cops and crime prevention both have come in higher than anticipated. And just to be fiscally responsible, we would like to increase their revenues and their expenses by $20,000 just to ensure they stay within budget for the rest of the year.
And that particular program is based on a sales tax increase that the voters had approved some years ago. I believe it's a quarter cent.
Yes, so there's two different sales tax. So the crime prevention was the first one and, whoops, I lied, more cops was the first one, which is a quarter cent sales tax. And then there was an additional tax which supports the crime prevention.
And according to that tax, we must meet certain funding levels or we wind up losing all of that money that pays for some of our police officers.
Yes, we must maintain the headcount that we had prior to that tax going into place in the general fund.
Thank you. Any questions on 7285? Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I move to approve Resolution number 7285.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? See, that wasn't so bad.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And again, sincere thanks to you all for the work you've done this year. The money was all over the place, had to make several changes throughout the year. Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move then to item number seven for possible action, appointment to the utility advisory committee. We've already, several of us have already mentioned the work that this committee has done. We have four members whose terms are expiring. I would like to open nominations for these four positions with nominating Greg Todd, Ned Shamo, Howard Analia, and Daniel Combs. Any other names for consideration for nomination? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, George Re and Shane Cunningham.
Any other names for nomination? All right, if there are no other names, I will move to close nominations. Anyone wishing to second?
I'll second here.
All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Madam City Clerk, should we take these then one at a time?
Yes, that'd be the easiest.
All right. We'll start then, all those in favor of appointing Greg Todd to the utility advisory committee, please raise your hand. Okay, that's four members with Member Bridges not supporting. Next name is Ned Shamo. All those wishing to nominate, or excuse me, appoint Mr. Shamo, please raise your hand. That decision is unanimous. Anyone who supports the appointment of Howard Analia, please raise your hand. That also is unanimous. All those in favor of appointing Daniel Combs, please raise your hand. That's four members, again with Councilmember Bridges not supporting. All those in favor of nominating, or excuse me, appointing George Re, please raise your That's one member. All those members supporting the appointment of Shane Cunningham, please raise your hand. Again, we have one member, Councilmember Bridges.
Mayor, with the first four, we had more than enough votes for.
I just wanted to be complete.
Thank you.
All right, do we need a, a final motion then? All right, again, thank you. We do have some members of the utility advisory committee, Mr. Todd being one of the reappointments. Sincerely appreciate the work that you've all done. Again, it, it's been a difficult year and the work you do certainly benefits our residents here in Boulder City. Item number eight for possible action, discussion update, and city staff direction regarding positions on certain bills introduced during the Nevada State Legislature. Madam City Attorney?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you. This is your last legislative update during legislative session. As you may know, the legislative session is set to adjourn signing die on May 31st, which is next Monday. With six days left and since your last legislative update, two major deadlines have passed, the Second House Committee passage and the Second House passage. All those policy measures that were not otherwise exempt were required to have been passed by those deadlines or otherwise would not able be, be able to move forward. The memorandum included in your packet has been updated to reflect the latest action on these bills. The majority of them are still being considered. Many of them are exempt from the deadlines, so they will be considered until the legislature adjourns signing die on, on May 31st. There are just two bills I wanted to briefly highlight for you. They're relatively new and new policies that were, that affect the city. The first is Assembly Bill 356. This is proposed by the Southern Nevada Water Authority. This bill was amended into an existing bill to essentially replace what was there and provides over the next six years a, a regulatory process in which, that which will eliminate non-functional turf in non-residential areas. So non-functional turf and, and an easy way to explain it is turf that's only touched when it's mowed. And so it's usually in medians, commercial spaces, et cetera. Boulder City as a constituent entity will have significant input in how this is implemented by the Southern Nevada Water Authority. In addition, the next one I'd like to highlight for you is Senate Bill 448. This is a large energy measure that was introduced very late in session. This measure would require NV Energy to invest in infrastructure to install two major transmission lines, one going from north-south and one going from east-west. In addition, it creates a, a regional task force that will evaluate whether the state should have a regional transmission organization. In addition, the bill would require the installation of charging stations throughout public highways in Nevada to provide for more resources for electric vehicles to charge it on our public roadways. Those are the two bills I'd like, I wanted to highlight. I'm available for any questions on, on any of the legislative measures that, that you see or any general questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I guess I will address the first one being the, regarding non-functional turf. Obviously, I think, I think it's clear that we are in a water crisis and, and not just in Nevada, but throughout the southwest. And so we definitely have to look at these things. I do think it's a little interesting that they do want to identify the source of water as being, you know, Colorado River source, but, you know, rather than just saying, let's just stop watering these non-functional turf. But in, you know, I, I'm not sure necessarily why that decision is being made to allow some continuation of it, but regardless, it's starting us in the right direction, you know. It's, it's nice to see grass, but, you know, if, if it's not, if it doesn't serve a purpose, it, it really is just a draining on our resource. And then with regard to the expansion of electric transmissions and Nevada Energy's input on that and the installation of charging stations, you know, it seems very clear to me that we are moving towards electrifying our, our fleet, the auto fleet throughout the country, even throughout parts of the world. Where the energy is coming from in Nevada continues to be, will continue to grow to be from renewable resources and energy, so it will help to continue to bring down that carbon footprint. In general, I, I do believe that we need to be getting away from, from, you know, needing to hop in your car for every single trip that you need to make. The, the less that we can do that, the more that we can, you know, look to, to city planning and stuff like that so that we can limit the amount of time that someone has to get in their car to get from point A to point B will also help us get there. But I, I think that that, again, it's starting to put us in the right direction. We need to start looking forward and not just continue on with, and pretend as if nothing is, is currently going on in our environment. So I, I think these are starting to put us in the right direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I was going to address both of them also. I was really glad to see that the one with the electric vehicles charging station was , was supported by Nevada Energy and, and that there are those requirements, that, that this is part of our future electric vehicles, hopefully solar charged electric facilities, charging stations, not coal fire plants, but. And the other is sitting on the Southern Nevada Water Authority, we've been talking about non-functional turf and, and it's really important. And I know we are likely going in that direction at our house too. You know, it's, as nice as front lawns are and Boulder City has a lot of that in the older homes. If the only, like you said, if the only person who walks on it is the person who mows it, it's non-functional turf. And also they're looking at water, consumptive water use and non-consumptive water use and non-consumptive water use goes back into the river and consumptive water use does not. And one of the things they're looking at is people with septic systems because that's consumptive. We are going into a drought. We have been in a drought. We are going below 1,075 feet. We are going to be looking at the drought contingency plan. So this is really, really important stuff. And the, today in SNRPC, we were talking about the greenhouse gas emissions measurement process they're going through and this all fits together. We've got climate change, we've got to reduce the amount of water we're using, we have to find alternate sources of energy. And these are all good measures. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to thank City Attorney Walker for her work in the legislature, to really giving us input, keeping Boulder City at the table and allowing council to give input on policy matters that will affect Boulder City. So thank you for all the work that you've been doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You know, I'll, I'll just close this out with the, you know, obvious that, yes, we're, we live in the desert and that's why not much stuff grows out there. And we need to be careful about how we use water. I think there are things that, you know, people have been sort of aware of. SNWA, Southern Nevada Water Authority, does have a program available to pay people to remove turf. From what I understand, that program is still going to be in place for this legislation that's out. You know, we, we love clean, green Boulder City, right? That, that's been one of our mottos here for decades. But we need to step back and take a look at, you know, what areas can we make changes in. Certainly, we don't want to see our parks get altered significantly, but we need to take a look around and see the areas where we're adding water that we no longer need to add water. We also need to be creative about what we may be doing with our wastewater. I know SNWA had floated the idea out of this line to reclaim the water. I think there are probably much better ways to handle that water for far less expense and the fact that that wastewater line would lead to more development, not less use of water. The, the expansion in Southern Nevada is strong. And, you know, regardless of what we do in saving water, as we build more in Southern Nevada, that puts a greater strain on the Colorado River. Boulder City, we've had controlled growth here for more than 40 years. We need to, in addition to being conservative with how we've grown, we're going to need to add to this effort as well by looking for ways to conserve that water. Madam City Attorney, again, I want to say thank you for all the work you've done looking at these. We have Lisa Foster that we've used for a number of years. You know, I know that all of you are involved in looking out for the future of Boulder City. You know, the flood control district had alerted us to a potential bill that might have had a, a significant impact on economic factors here in Boulder City. So it's a group effort. When you're a small community, sometimes you get overlooked. So again, Madam City Attorney, the effort you've done up there is very appreciated. And we got a week, so that means there's probably about five days left of not much happening and then two days left of all kinds of things happening up there in Carson City. So please keep an eye on it for us.
I will. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
Thank you. All right, next item, city manager's report. Mr. City Manager? Mr. City Manager?
Nothing unusual to report.
Any questions or comments on City Manager's Report? All right, that brings us to our final public comment period. Public comment during this period may be on any issue. Speakers will have up to five minutes to speak, and as always, please be civil and concise. I only see a couple people left in chambers, but anyone here in chambers who would like to speak and final public comment? All right, the phone line is available. Anyone wishing to call in? The phone number is seven zero two, five eight nine, nine six two nine. Anyone wishing to speak? The number is seven zero two, five eight nine, nine six two nine.
Yes, there's one.
Please go ahead.
This written comment was submitted by Kenneth Green on behalf of Gingerwood Residents' Public safety problem, crosswalks, and lighted warning signals. I'm grateful for the city and state's attempt to provide additional safety for pedestrians crossing Boulder Highway, coming into Boulder City, but based on how the people cross the street, it is now worse. Here are the problems and close calls I have seen in the past month. One, person using the crosswalk on foot does not press the signal, or it malfunctioned and did not light. I noticed a city service truck stopping last week apparently to work on a signal. A, when a person using the crosswalk without the signal and reach midway, they are out of sight because of the palm trees and other added structures, so when they step off in the medium, cars can't see them till they are on top of them. B, because drivers now rely on the signal, they fail to notice a person stepping off the curb when the signal is not flashing. Two, jaywalkers are always a problem, and now when they appear without a signal, not in a crosswalk, the risk of being hit is even higher. A, people are lazy and will not walk very far out of the way to get to the crosswalk. The most common jaywalking is near fast-food places or strip malls. I don't have an answer for jaywalking. Higher-priced tickets for jaywalking, more enforcement, crosswalks closer together, and more accessible to locations people are jaywalking may help. You can't add a barrier in the medium as people cross where the street has left turn lanes. The problem with the people out of sight behind the palm trees the city added in the medium can be corrected to provide visibility for both sides of the street for people crossing. Don't misunderstand, I love the way it looks, but it's going to kill someone someday. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is our final public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak? The phone number is seven zero two, five eight nine, nine six two nine. And our last agenda item, our city council reports. We'll start with Councilmember Bridges.
I have no report, except as a reminder that Emergency Aid has funding for residents of Boulder City who need assistance with rent, utilities, and food. It's been by appointment, I think, I believe it still continues to be by appointment, but there's no reason why anybody in Boulder City should be suffering the effects of, of an emergency, or having lost their job, and, and they should contact Emergency Aid.
Thank you. Councilmember Folden?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. As of today, the Southern Nevada Health District is reporting more than a million first doses of the COVID-19 vaccine having been administered throughout Clark County. And of those over a million, it's seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-two have been fully vaccinated. You know, this is a huge, huge step in the right direction. I am happy to be here. You can even see the two of us in the, in the same camera today. It's, it's very nice to start to return to some normalcy. I can't wait to see more and more members of the public returning to council meetings. It has definitely been one of the, for me, one of the, the major setbacks. It's, it's something to be up here doing the people's work, and to not have those eyes on you, you know, to kind of help keep you in check, and kind of help center you and ground you to remind us why we're all here. So, I'm very happy that we're moving in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll, my comments are in a similar vein to that, that, you know, with the number of people getting vaccinated now, and I think we started our program somewhere back in February of this year, we are over fifty percent here in Boulder City of people who have been fully vaccinated. The number that is recommended is that we get to seventy to eighty-five percent. You know, our senior citizens responded to this very well. Their numbers are up in that seventy percent range. We're seeing fewer people in the younger age groups getting vaccinated, although that still is up, you know, in the fifty percent range. I think what we've seen over these past several weeks is the number of new infections, the number of people being hospitalized, and thankfully, the number of people who have died from this disease have significantly fallen over this past month. It directly correlates with the number of vaccinations that are being given nationwide. You know, we've had tens of millions of doses administered across the country. I understand some people may think that the vaccine is unnecessary, or may have doubts about its effectiveness or its effects. I encourage you to, you know, speak with your doctors, speak with your health provider, find out what they think about this. You know, with the response we've had in the past several months, there's been a, a small fraction of people who have had serious effects from this. But again, that is a very, very small percent of people, a fraction of a percent, of people who have had adverse reactions. So, please, speak with your healthcare provider. The vaccines are free, they're available, take advantage of the program. Let's really put this thing in our memories and, and get on with life. We have Memorial Day coming up this weekend, a time to remember our veterans out there who gave it their all for this country. Looking forward to events during the summer, Danbury, Fourth of July, all of that. Let, let's get this done. Thanks for everyone for the work tonight from our staff. With that, we're adjourned.